Evening and welcome to the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three zoning committee meeting. We will be holding a hybrid public meeting which enables remote electronic participation as legally authorized by the Code of Virginia for planning commissions, electronic meeting policy adopted on July seventh, two thousand and twenty-second. We are waiting on our third member, so we're only going to do this introduction and we have no substantive conversation with Karen of his other group. Members of ZOPO are participating both here and in person virtually through electronic meetings. At this time, I'd like to orient everyone to our hybrid environment and cover a few specifics about how tonight's meeting will run. Members, the public may attend the meeting here in person or electronically by using the Microsoft Teams links provided on the ZOPO page and the county's events calendar. The email notification sent to local news emails. There's only the dial-in phone option for those who wish to use it. Or are planning commissioners doing virtually? If anyone loses internet connectivity during today's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. Please keep your phones and devices muted until you're called upon. Turn off sound and any other devices around to minimize interference.
I don't see any other commissioners joining us virtually. No, not at all. No commissioners who've called in.
For our virtual commissioner attending Microsoft Teams, please cannot forbid you keep your mic unmuted as you enter the meeting and during the meeting. The Microsoft Teams meeting chat will only be used to provide instructions for virtual attendees and how to register, on how to register for public comment and field general questions from Microsoft Teams. Teams chat will not otherwise be monitored by staff or the planning commission during the meeting, nor will it be used to collect feedback. Unlike the planning commission's regular meetings, ZOPO agenda items are not public hearings, therefore, public comments that the ZOPO chair's discretion after the meeting discussion has concluded. Public comments can be provided by people attending in person and virtually, or in-person attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening. You may indicate on the meeting sign-in sheet that you would like to provide public comment, or virtual attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening. You may indicate in the Teams chat that you would like to provide public comment, and your name will be added to the list of speakers. And we will have a public comment if anyone wants to sign up. As a reminder, you always have the option to provide written comments via a link that is provided in Teams chat on the ZOPO's website. All written comments, whether on paper or online, be shared with the planning commission and posted to the ZOPO pages for the public. Hey, here's Karen. All comments received as of noon today have already been shared with ZOPO. I will call for speakers at the end of the meeting. I will ask Mr. Rogers to let me know if we have virtual attendees who would like to provide comments. Roger, both knowledge speakers in the Team Chat, please indicate in the chat that you'd like to provide a comment, and your name will be added for this. Members of the public attending virtually will speak first, followed by in-person attending. When virtual attendees are called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting demand bar. Moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Lastly, this is a public forum. Today's meeting will be recorded, posted on the county website. All information is submitted to today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to creative information as required. All right, with that, we can jump into our agenda. First, let's go around and introduce ourselves. For a small group, oh, here's Chris. So I'm Leo Sarley. I'm with the planning commission. I'm chair of the ZOPO.
My name is Nick Rogers. I'm a principal planner in CPHD's Planning Division. I deal mostly with zoning text amendments, sometimes as a direct project manager, sometimes in more of an advisory capacity to other staff. I've been with the county for about five years, and I'm also the official liaison to the planning commission's zoning committee. Over to Val.
I'm Val Weiner. I am a commercial development specialist with Arlington Economic Development Office in the real estate development group. I joined the county in October, so I'm relatively new, and I'm here as part of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative Team. Emily Peterson, planning commission.
Are we giving a little more elaborate introduction tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, well, my name's Chris Fryder. I'm the urban design section supervisor. I'm Brad, and we're leading the food study, which we'll learn about tonight. Urban Design Section provides support for site plan review. They also provide support for long-range planning efforts such as the food zoning, and I've been with the county for nine years. Thank you.
I'm Brett Wallace, Planning Division, Urban Design, work with Chris, leading the food study that will be providing an update on it tonight, and then the county for eleven years.
Karen, the bottom, last question.
Thanks for coming, Karen. And then we have Michelle Lantelme.
Hi, Jim Lantelme, planning commission, and I'm here virtually.
We've got both Jill and Mark joining us virtually. Jill.
Hi, I'm Jill Hunger. I'm with CPHD, and if we're giving it, I've been with the county for twenty-two years now.
Mark McCauley with Arlington Economic Development, been with the county for fourteen years.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Anyone else? It looks like we have one member of the public, Mr. Davidson, who's also joining us virtually. Right, Mr. Davidson?
Hey, everyone. I'm just an Arlington resident, joining virtually, partly out of curiosity and partly because I'm in Arlington Neighborhood College, and they told us we had to attend a commission meeting to learn about what happens in the county.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I think we're ready to start on our first agenda item, which is the food delivery service. So I'll turn it over to, well, Mr. Chair is Val is bringing up her presentation for
that item. I wanted to give just a brief FYI to the members of the planning commission at your public hearing earlier this month. I know Mr. Cliff Hogan presented a series of text amendments of maintenance, upkeep, correcting some errors and various technical deficiencies. He has some, and he would have mentioned that it's a phase of several iterations of maintenance packages that he'll be bringing to you this year. The next one of those is going to be focused on aligning our zoning ordinance and making sure that we're concurrent and with the Code of Virginia standards related to telecommunications facilities. There's been a lot of activity in that space over the past five or six years. We've been administering our zoning standards in compliance with the Code of Virginia, but our local code doesn't necessarily reflect them. So he is going to be bringing that, I believe, and that there is, forgive me for not having the exact month on at the tip of my tongue, but that is something that I believe is coming your way this summer. And so because of the nature of that, after some coordination internally, our preference and what we're moving forward with is providing an advanced memo, very similar to a ZOPO memo, that will circulate through the clerk to the planning commission well in advance of your public hearing, so that you're not, so it's kind of a hybrid rather than spending time on, again, what is mostly a maintenance exercise here at ZOPO. We give you that advanced memo, that the richness that's in your typical ZOPO memo, so you're hearing it ahead of time as opposed to just a week out from your public hearing. So I anticipate that memo will be ready in sometime mid-May, we're getting close to mid-May now.
Right.
But within the next couple of weeks or so, and so, I'm planning to see that coming from Ms. Johnson.
Great.
Yep, so, and then, so that was my only sort of upkeep item. I think we can turn things over to Val to kick off our agenda.
Really quickly, as much as Cliff can bring into ZOPO, will you bring it?
Sure.
You know, the memo's fine, but if we can have a conversation.
So for this particular item, are you asking us to schedule, not for this, but for a future one?
Yeah, if it happens to be sort of, got it.
Sounds good. Okay.
Val, your turn. Ready?
Yes, okay. I had on here to introduce myself, but I'm Val for the second time today. I'm here again on behalf of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative Group, and just to jump. Okay, so here's a quick agenda of what we're going to cover today. I'm going to go very briefly over the context of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative. I know you all have received that quite a few times, but I wanted to give a little bit of context, and then we'll jump right into the uses. Hopefully, it will only be about fifteen minutes, and so we'll leave some questions and time for discussion at the end. So for some context, this initiative was initiated in April, two thousand and twenty-two by the county manager. I have on here a list of the approved uses that we've been able to work through the county board approval process thus far. It's a pretty substantial list, but I wanted to emphasize that the real method of this initiative is zoning, and there are limitations to that, and I will talk through that later in the presentation. But it's important to keep in mind that we're really talking here about zoning and land use when dealing with these initiatives. Wanted to quickly just show where we are talking about. It's specifically commercial mixed-use and industrial districts, so the ones in blue in this map. So to jump right into food delivery. This service is incredibly important as a tool for restaurants and food establishments in Arlington. It was initially introduced in November, nineteen eighty-eight, as a response to the pizza delivery problem, primarily car congestion and traffic. There were use standards that were initially introduced, but they were rejected in favor of a use permit. What this does, the use permit process gives county staff and the county board more control over each application, and there's no sort of standard set of rules that apply to every single application, and they wanted to consider it a primary food establishment use as opposed to an accessory. And we can talk more about what that means a little later on. But since nineteen eighty-eight, quite a few things have changed. I could not find a picture of Arlington in nineteen eighties, but I found one from two thousand and seven that's as far back as Google Earth could take me, and still, there's a pretty big difference in the density and development. This is on Wilson Boulevard, and obviously, food delivery and restaurants have to keep up with that demand. So that market has grown exponentially since November of nineteen eighty-eight, and the code has not been updated since then. And taking a look at the use permit requirements that we've put in place since nineteen eighty-eight, they're really more focused on managing the service as opposed to it as a land use, and it really is not sufficient in regulating it for a couple of primary reasons, which I will get into. So one of the biggest reasons that the use permit standards that we have put in place are not incredibly effective is because of third-party delivery services like Uber Eats and Postmates. These services are, they work out of individuals' vehicles. They are not associated with an actual establishment or land use, so zoning cannot apply to these uses. So I think really the most important thing to take away from this recommendation is that zoning is not the tool to regulate third-party services, and they are the services that are really having the biggest land use or the biggest impact on congestion and traffic when you think about double parking, for example. Another important driver of these principles is that is business resilience. These third-party services can take up to thirty percent of a restaurant and food establishment's profits, and as AED in the county as a whole, we want to make sure that these businesses thrive, and we want to level the playing field for them. We want to get rid of some of the barriers that may be in their way to offering the service in-house. And then lastly, the continuity of governance ordinance removed some of the regulatory and enforcement tools that were in place for food delivery, but that's ending in August of two thousand and twenty-three. So what we really have is a case study of about two years plus in the pandemic that shows what happens when we don't regulate food delivery. And it's really helped us, inform us as staff, where does zoning fit in that sort of puzzle? And this lands us at our recommendation, which is, we recommend that food delivery service be a byright accessory use to a food establishment in commercial mixed-use and industrial districts, which are those blue sections on the map. So just sort of repeat some of the things I said previously, this supports business resilience. It will sort of level that playing field, get rid of that one extra step that may make it easier for a business to offer that service in-house and avoid losing that profit. It does not, oh, this is a point I meant to make earlier. There are other departments that regulate curbside management outside of zoning, so particularly the Department of Environmental Services and the Police Department. They work concurrently to manage the curbside, and specifically DES's Performance Parking Pilot will help give them sort of a library of information to help them understand where actually are the short-term parking spots, and where can we put better signage to indicate to people these are pick-up-and-drop-off zones. That is separate from zoning, and that will continue. That pilot is carrying forward, and they're doing some great work. So we think that making this a byright accessory use truly just makes it easier for business and does not at all impact the county's ability to regulate the curbside. Moving on to shared commercial kitchens, and we can obviously have time for discussion at the end if you have any questions. Shared commercial kitchens were introduced in November, two thousand and twenty-one in the ground story uses for Columbia Pike Form-based code districts. They were byright use without use standards. What is on the slide, this is the definition that currently is in the zoning code. In looking at this definition, we found that it is not entirely comprehensive of the spectrum of shared commercial kitchens that are in the market today, that both exist already in Arlington and that we're seeing elsewhere. So our proposal is to expand that definition to include basic shared commercial kitchens, retail incubator, and open-air shared commercial kitchens. And I'll go one by one through them. I understand that these icons oversimplify what they are, but I think they'll help drive home the point of the differences between the three. Okay, we like icons, that's true, okay. So to start with the most basic version of the three, basic shared commercial kitchens are brick-and-mortar locations with multiple commercial kitchens that are then rented out or leased to multiple tenants. They're also known as ghost or shadow kitchens. There are a lot of benefits from this model, particularly supporting business resilience by offering low-cost, flexible rental kitchen spaces. This also includes services like storage space for their product. Usually, there will be a single owner of the building that will offer technology services, so there's a comprehensive service that every business in the building can use to manage their pick-up and drop-off, and the building will also help them, or the building owner will help them with the pick-up and drop-off, dealing with the third-party services, because that's a big part of the business model. In terms of zoning, the land use impact is that there is no pedestrian or public access inherent in this model. So what you're seeing here, this is Cloud Kitchens Ivy City Food Works. This is in Ivy City, Washington, D.C. This sort of outdoor dining space they have here is not common. This is not the norm. And really, for the majority of these models, they're just a box with kitchens in them. And so what we have recommended is that this model be, require a use permit if it has public access in commercial and mixed-use districts, and then byright if it does not have public access. And part of this is, we would like, we understand that the idea of commercial kitchens on second floor and up is unlikely, but it's not impossible, and we want to leave that door open. There's no need for public access at that point if you're on an upper floor, or if you're on a side street that really does not have a lot of pedestrian activity, but it really isn't necessary there either. And then part of this recommendation is also to make it byright in industrial districts as well. Get back some quick. Yeah, what do you mean by, you know, I was prepped for this. Okay. So we've been working with zoning staff on that exact terminology, because they're the ones that will be administering it, and what we've landed with is adjacent to street right-of-way and located in floor space with direct public access. And that's been a lot of, that's after a lot of wordsmithing, and basically, they want to make sure this is clear to them in terms of you are next to right-of-way and you have public access from the street, because there could be right-of-way without public access, but that isn't what we're trying to get at here. What we're trying to get at is that you are next, you're adjacent to right-of-way, and you have some sort of public access, and they feel comfortable deciding what that means administratively. Yeah, very fair question. Moving on to retail incubator shared commercial kitchens. So this model is the basic shared commercial kitchen, but more fun. They offer some combination of services like retail incubator coursework or onsite dining. Incubator courses can help a business go from idea to market. A lot of great examples come out of this region, actually. Union Kitchen is one of the most famous in the country. I studied it in grad school in New England. It's a very big deal. And Compass Coffee, which is, has multiple locations throughout Arlington, is one of the graduates of the incubator program coming out of Union Kitchen. There are a lot of benefits to this model, not only for the business in helping them scale up, but also for the public. There's a lot of opportunities to engage, and like Union Kitchen in D.C. has tasting events often, so we feel with, in terms of the land use impact, that lack of pedestrian access is not present. So we feel that this model should be byright in commercial mixed-use and industrial districts because of the inherent activity and interaction with the public. And lastly, I would like to note that I put a boot on that truck, just so everyone can see that. So an open-air shared commercial kitchen looks like a food truck, but is stationary, and that is really the crux of why it is so difficult for the county to regulate this use. We have a food truck ordinance, and we have the zoning code which regulates land uses, but this is sort of in this gray area in between. And there's actually a group of these, of this model behind the Whole Foods in Clarendon. There's a lot there that has quite a few of these, and there's been a lot of conversation internally among staff of how to deal with these from a health regulatory perspective, fire code, building code, and there isn't a comprehensive approach or decision yet on how that's going to look, but these were permitted due to the COGO, the continuity of governance ordinance. And that, again, is ending. So we want to be able to give them some guidance in August, so they're not sort of left out to figure, it's not just chaos. So a sort of a stopgap until the county figures out a more comprehensive solution to this model, we'd like to recommend that this use be, have, require a use permit in commercial mixed-use districts, but then be byright in industrial. So worst comes to worst, they can move to industrial districts for the, for the, for the time period until the county figures out some sort of comprehensive approach to how it's, how they're going to look in mixed-use and commercial. You and me, anybody? Yeah.
Sell through the door or windows.
So usually with this model, it would be a third-party service would go and pick it up for you. It's not often that you can go and order it and they give it to you like in a food truck. So normally, you probably wouldn't even know that you've ordered from one of these when you order from Uber Eats. You wouldn't, you would just see like, I'm forgetting the name of them all now, but there's like a bow restaurant. You would just, if you wanted bow one day, you order it, and you have no idea it's coming out of this truck in Clarendon. Is this? Next word you have. Great question. You can have as many as the owner will permit, and that's part of the gray area of this use. These are relatively new sort of models that really skyrocketed in popularity after the pandemic, during and after the pandemic, and they normally have like three commercial kitchens max in them, usually less, but they'll, they.
Use it in a parking lot.
No, they can have multiple kitchens in that truck, like physical kitchens in the truck, and the person who owns that truck, so this is Reef Neighborhood Kitchens is the one, they own the, all of the trucks in that lot in Clarendon. They can, they will fill that truck as often as they can, so you could have people working there 2:00 a.m., you know, people want burritos too. So if they, if they know that there's a demand for that food at a certain time, they will allow a user to go into that space. My understanding is that they are full as much as the owner will permit, and that's where we get into the issues with the health and the fire and the, right, and that's, that's why there really isn't a comprehensive approach yet to dealing with these. That's why we want to do use permit in all commercial mixed-use districts. Industrial, there's really not as much of, in terms of land use, there's not as much of a risk there. So this is the overview of what we're looking at for shared commercial kitchens. We can pop back to this at the end. This is just to give a brief summary. All right, so on to some of the food term standardization. So there's always been a food catering term in the zoning code, but it was separated into large and small-scale catering in two thousand and fifteen, but not given an actual definition or delineation. So there's no number that decides you are either a small or large-scale caterer. So there's still a definition for food catering service, but there's no definitions for small or large yet. The impact of this is that it can determine where your business can go, so either in a commercial or an industrial district, and that can make a pretty big difference in terms of reaching your target market and audience. So based on the caterers in Arlington and in neighboring jurisdictions, we found that eight thousand square feet is a large enough threshold where a small-scale caterer can grow into a space, and small enough that it would not impact large-scale caterers at all, because they really do two different sets of services. Large-scale caterers run weddings and large events, and they need warehouse space, as in the photo at the bottom. And then small-scale caterers are usually some combination of retail, grocer, cafe. They really, if you're larger than eight thousand square feet, it makes sense that you would be considered a large-scale caterer. You're looking for that larger warehouse-type space. And then Restaurant Limited and Restaurant General, again, sort of a similar standardization that we're looking to do in the code. The difference between these two uses is established through use standards, but not any, there's no definitions of these two uses. So, and these use standards are based on a percentage of food delivery sales. We are recommending through this sort of pile of recommendations that we're giving you, for food delivery to be recommended as a byright accessory use, which would sort of deem these use standards, not contradictory, but unnecessary. They're also very similar in the use tables already. There is only one district where they differ, the one circled in red. So in terms of condensing them down to a single restaurant use, there's really no policy impact. We're really just sort of simplifying and modernizing the code and making it easier to, for staff to administer and for applicants to get their projects moved quicker through the process.
This is sort of, this is pretty much a zero impact, right?
Yeah.
Because we've never monitored the percentage that's.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and it really isn't in line with how we're thinking about food delivery now anyway, especially if we approve it as a byright accessory use. And then I believe this is lastly, the definitions for restaurant drive-through and restaurant fast food kind of create this closed loop. They reference one another, and then they are no longer, they're not referenced anywhere else in the zoning code, the actual terms, restaurant drive-through and restaurant fast food. However, their land use impacts are accounted for, which is the important thing in zoning. So the drive-throughs are an accessory use in both commercial and industrial districts, and they already require a use permit. We're not looking to change that right now, because that's a different study. And then fast food isn't already an example of a food establishment, so there really isn't a need for these two definitions. They just sort of add unnecessary verbiage to the document. So the recommendation here is to remove both terms for consistency. That is it. How do I do on time?
Wonderful.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Carol, turn things over to you.
Thanks.
Questions in the commission.
I'm looking at the commissioner, see if anyone has any questions, if anyone online has their hand up.
So why are we considering byright delivery service in new areas on the map, but not all over Arlington?
That is a very good question. The charge of this initiative is just focusing on commercial mixed-use and industrial districts. That's not to say we can't do that in the future, but right now, that is sort of the focus of the initiative as a whole, is just the business.
So if you had your druthers, it would be everywhere.
Me personally?
Yeah. Or as you, in your role? What is AED's position?
Um, I think so, but that's a more in-depth conversation if you're getting into more residential neighborhoods. That's a deeper conversation to have.
But the, sorry, but the net result is like ninety percent or more, right, that the restaurants are a little good?
Yes.
So the impact is significant and that's a good question. But I think that'll pursue. Sorry, I'm trying to phrase my stage. I think the bang for the buck is in this blue zone and I think the other area as well, it would be seen further. Something that we can do. Mark has some offer. Oh, sorry, Mark.
No, I think, I was just gonna, I think Leah, you said it perfectly. I think these districts that we call commercial mixed use are off, are, are the significant portion of where a restaurant, for instance, could locate. Other zoning districts would not allow restaurants in their district. So this is really capturing the vast majority of, of a, very vast majority of restaurants.
So one of the concerns that we've talked about with the commercial kitchens is noise that might be associated with truck deliveries if there's somebody cooking. You know, bakery items at four in the morning, so they can have them delivered to the hotels by 6:00 AM. You know, how have you guys thought about how that might impact, you know, residents, residents that are near these areas?
Sure. So I think in terms of how this use compares to others in Arlington, it's really not much different in terms of when deliveries happen, how much delivery. I have a target in my building, probably be about the same as that. It's really not loud at all. I've never been waking up by it. So I, I don't think it would be any different than what's already happening in our commercial and industrial districts.
And we already approved this for Columbia Pike, right?
Yep.
And have there been increased noise complaints or anything?
To, to the best of my knowledge, Commissioner Peters, and I don't think we, I don't, and we can check in this to just triple confirm. I don't believe we've had additional shared commercial kitchens established along Columbia Pike since that zoning change we have was Laco Cina. It's now Kitchen of Purpose. I believe they're still in operation. But it, it, that change did not create a plethora of, of, unfortunately to, to AED's chagrin, it didn't fill up a bunch of commercial vacancy space with additional shared.
And we don't necessarily expect this to either. The goal is really just to open the door and see if anything. Thanks.
Kind of clarifying, follow up. Commissioner Kenley, were you talking about delivery or the shared kitchen?
I was talking about delivery trucks. Beep 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 beep. They all assume same idea. Yeah. But I mean, the work itself. The red should not be left.
Right. Did you have any reaction on the delivery factor on the shared kitchen? I think that's the same as Amazon.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think a lot of this is already happening in other ways. Shared commercial kitchens are very similar to a, like a restaurant where we have some food halls in Arlington that have a similar type of impact. So it's, in terms of those types of impacts, there really would be no, no major difference you could see from the other uses in commercial and industrial districts.
Okay, let me just finish, Commissioner Peterson, are you done?
I'm, I have, so let's go to the other man.
All right. Commissioner Lamont, tell me.
Yes, I, I have a question about one of the, I think it was the ghost kitchen or one of them requires a special use permit if the public is allowed in, but by right, if nobody is allowed, if it's, yeah, that's the one, the shared commercial kitchens. Wouldn't it, I would have thought it would be the other way around because by not allowing people in, it could be seen as deadening the streetscape because it doesn't create, you know, pedestrian traffic, which you might want to look at for that specific location. Whereas if you're letting people in, it's, it's great for the neighborhood because it's another destination. So go through the reasoning on that. I wasn't quite tracking it.
That, that's a great point and actually exactly what this is trying to say. I think the confusing bit is the terminology here. It in these sentences is the actual establishment that the use is trying to get into. So rather than saying if the business has public access, it's if the site has public access. So it's saying exactly what you are describing. We want to avoid deadening the streetscape and therefore we want a use permit if the site has public access because this use inherently does not. So we want that to go through, so I'm with you and I think that's a great point and I will work on this language to make that.
Okay, yeah, because that was really confusing to me. Because it seemed as though this was a commercial kitchen that if it happened to let people in, but if you're saying the overall site, it's in a site plan, for example, that allows public access, then this would have to go by a, you'd, you'd have to get a, a the use permit because it wouldn't be allowing people in, even though the site overall does. That's what you're trying to get at?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, yeah, that was really confusing. So definitely have to, have to figure, do that better. Thank you for clarifying that. That makes great sense. One thing that I do want to raise is that overall, this is a great initiative. And I, I very, very much support what we're doing here. And I think, it's actually Commissioner Hughes isn't here tonight, but he did raise something that I thought really resonated with me. Is that when we're looking at zoning for doing that and his approach is more, why don't we then simply regulate the externalities that any use can do? Because there's virtually any use possible that you could think of for a site would generate some, could generate some sort of externality that people would be upset about. Some more than others, but almost all of them do. And rather than trying to parse out which one's better and which one isn't, instead regulate the externality and deal with it that way rather than via the zoning ordinance. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out there as a sort of philosophical way of looking at this stuff. And I thought it, it was something that to me made sense. Maybe it doesn't work for every single type of site or use, but you know, like, you know, if we're going to have a, an oil refinery. But for most of the uses that we have in the county, that strikes me as being, could be a rational approach. Anyway, that's just an editorial comment. Thank you.
So did you, Mark, did you catch that? I need to ask.
Yeah, no, I, I don't need to say much more. I think, I think Commissioner Lamont summed it out well. There are different ways to approach zoning ordinance. We discussed them all over the past year and a half. There are basic, we always say that it's as hard for the zoning administrator to decide what's not allowed versus what is allowed. So there's not as much efficiencies as often. But I think the real answer is, is that we really wanted to get going on some of these uses to make it more flexible. Rewriting the zoning ordinance in a, in that fashion is a longer term process and doesn't mean it's not a good one. It just means that that's maybe a future discussion, but I think we wanted to make sure we were not taking years to solve a problem versus taking months to solve individual problems. And I think, but it's a point well made. It's been made before and we appreciate the comment.
I, I had a quick question, just on this picture while it's up. You mentioned that the kitchen doesn't have exterior seating. Our next presentation is on exterior seating.
Yep.
So I'm just wondering if there's any crossover that perhaps might benefit. I mean, I guess there is the opportunity, shouldn't we sort of perhaps welcome the possibility of having external seating to like a shared commercial kitchen?
Absolutely. And I, so that's, that's where some of these nuances come in. So if you, it, it's sort of an if then logic line. If you are not a basic shared commercial kitchen, then you are a retail incubator shared commercial kitchen. These have onsite dining, these, they're, they're much more flexible in terms of their use. So it's, it's really an either or. So we're not saying you can't have dining.
And it was that specific?
It's just.
I think I got it.
Yeah.
And also where you're identifying, Commissioner Sardley, is that there's multiple pathways to outdoor dining. And so I, I won't steal Brett's thunder, but a, an outdoor cafe is an accessory use to a restaurant and only a restaurant. And, and Brett jumped down my throat if I get this, if I get this wrong. So, so that a restaurant has the possibility to establish an outdoor cafe, a retail incubator shared commission, shared, a retail incubator, shared commercial kitchen. We're seeing the possibility for seating associated with that dining area. So it's a real choose your own adventure, the commission's going down tonight. But yeah, I'm, I'm relieved to see it's on the radar. So that's good.
Absolutely.
Can we go to the small scale, large scale catering designation?
Yep.
And I think I was just, can you go over this again with me? And also, so anybody that's 8,000 square feet or less can be in the blue areas on the map. Above 8,000 square wouldn't be allowed in the areas on the map.
So the, the blue areas on the map are a combination of both commercial and industrial. So I, I didn't separate them out. So the way that this works right now is if you are small scale, you can only be in commercial. If you are large scale, you can only be in industrial. So it sort of splits out that blue map.
Okay.
So they can still be in part of the blue. But really in reality, the market's already deciding this. If you want, if you're a large scale caterer, you want space. You, you want to be in an industrial warehouse. If you're small scale, what this is doing is allowing a larger small scale caterer to exist in commercial districts because really they're in essence a retail commercial use.
And do we have a lot of spaces that would be 8,000 square feet that would be set up for this? And I'm just wondering, I remember hearing that once a landlord turns their space into a kitchen, a restaurant, it is, it is very expensive to make that investment. So you never go back. Once you put that stuff there, it's there. So I just, I guess I'm kind of wondering, spaces like this exist already? Is this going to require a large investment and a risk for a landlord to take? Do you feel like this is, you know, going to happen?
It's a great question. I think as with all of these uses that we're presenting in this entire initiative, we don't know. This is not, this is just zoning. This is not an incentive for a landlord or anyone to actually change or do some sort of tenant fit out for their space. So the answer is I, I am not sure. 8,000 square feet is large, but the point of that is to allow for growth. A lot of the, like I use the, the Italian store is about 7,000 square feet. So that's, that's a pretty good size space. I believe so, yeah. So, and then we're dealing with like the small scale caterers, second catering, their catering portion of their restaurant is 200 square feet. So it really ranges in terms of the amount of side, size of business needs or square footage of business needs. But we want to give them that opportunity for growth if it's there. So really what we're doing is we're, we're trying to open the door and see what happens. So formal answer, I don't know.
And okay, so my last question was about the drive-throughs. We would go to those slides again. Drive-throughs, I don't remember what my question. So this is going to allow anybody to apply for a use permit to have a drive-through?
So this actually isn't changing any policy. It's just striking the two definitions for restaurant comma drive-through and restaurant comma fast food.
Any restaurant could apply for a special permit to have a drive-through. So we don't need those decisions.
Right. But it's already there. We're not changing that at all. We're not touching that policy. That's for a different study at a different time. This is just getting rid of these two definitions because they're sort of cyclical and not really necessary.
You can see, correct me if I'm wrong, the accessory use table, there's a line item that's like drive-through. I don't know the exact word, drive-through window or drive, drive-through. And it's use all the way across.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Great. All right. I think that takes care of this. I don't want to comment on this. Oh, Commissioner Lamont, can you?
Yeah, I have one more thing I'd like to look at or address. And I, and you did touch on it, but I also want to make sure I understood what you're saying and sort of give, again, an editorial comment. This is on parking. The less that, the, the less that we direct specific parking ratios or amount of parking or that sort of thing, the better. I pretty much feel that anybody who's going to be renting a space for whatever any of these uses is going to have to figure that, what their needs are themselves and decide whether it's, it's going to work or not. For us to say you need to have X number of parking spaces is sort of pointless because either they're going to need more than that, they won't rent regardless of saying it, or they're going to need less and then otherwise they're, and we could end up preventing somebody from renting a spot because it doesn't have an, even though we don't think it has enough parking, even though they don't need the parking. So I would not want to have us be dictating that. That's the type of externality that's better dealt with on our curb management and our other, and dealing with it in that way. A larger holistic look at parking in the entire area, we're in that specific use. So anyway, that, that's, that's my comment on that. And like I said, I think you did address it and I want to make sure that I understand how you're addressing parking. Thank you.
Yeah, so I can do a quick run through of that. So for food delivery, we are not imposing any parking requirements for food delivery. We did look at what that would look like. And then in having conversations with staff, including TES, we all agreed with what you're saying, that curbside management should really be done on a holistic level, looking at the entire commercial corridor rather than business by business. And then the other, the shared commercial kitchens will for now be parked as, in the table, it's regarded as retail use other, but I think it's one space for 250 square feet. So we're not imposing, we played around with what it would look like to change that. And really what we decided is that the parking table needs more attention and study than we have the capacity or time to do for this round. So that is a great opportunity for a future study, but for now we're working with what we've got and then we can dig into the details of the table later.
Okay, great, because I really would like us to look at that because looking back, apparently the, the basis for parking per square foot comes out of thin air. You know, there's, there's no real scientific or data that ends up out of supporting that. It goes back to the mists of time as to, and, and tradition as to what there's, these numbers come from. And there's been books written on these things. So I very much would like the county to be looking at that. I think we're grossly overparked all over the county in the commercial zones. And it's something we really do need to look at and it can be an impediment to our economic growth by having unnecessary parking requirements or inflexible parking requirements. So again, another editorial comment there and I definitely encourage you to be looking at the parking. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. All right. It's 7:50. So I think we're ready to start our other phase. Did you have anything else about any closing statement?
No, this has been incredibly helpful. If you have any follow-up questions, let me know. I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
So I think generally we're very supportive of the market resiliency thing, of the adaptive reuse of office spaces and whatnot. So absolutely. The, the schedule, just a quick reminder of, of when the mission will see this again.
This will be 31st May.
I believe so.
31st of May meeting and then going in front of the county board, June 11.
It's a regular meeting at the end of May. We already had our meetings. I know.
That's our June meeting.
The June meeting.
The June meeting.
It's happening in May. All right. Well, thanks, Val.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, Brian, take it away.
All right. So we'll keep talking about food, but more specifically, we're here to provide an update tonight on the future of outdoor dining study or the food study, one of our more playful acronyms for a study in the county. Just a quick overview of the presentation I'll be giving tonight. Just going over the study purpose and goals. I'll be going over the study schedule and timeline. I'll be explaining the existing regulations and guidelines that we have in place for outdoor dining. We'll touch on some background on the temporary outdoor seating areas or TOSSAs. So I'm going to use the TOSA acronym frequently throughout my presentation. That's what that refers to. I'll provide an overview of some community engagement that occurred last fall. And then I'll be presenting some preliminary recommendations and the next steps. And so looking at the timeline, really moving from left to right, um, where we launched the study last, uh, fall. And that was when the county manager removed the emergency order. Uh, we've moved into phase one of the study last fall and into the winter was really information gathering, reviewing the TOSSAs, existing policies. We were looking at other neighboring jurisdictions, other cities, seeing what's working, what's not during the pandemic. Um, we had some community engagement last fall. Um, we had an online forum where we received approximately two thousand responses. So that was really good. And then we hosted two virtual roundtable events. Um, we're really right now between phase two and phase three. Um, we're, we're still, uh, we synthesized some of the findings from phase one to develop some of the recommendations that we'll, uh, share this evening. Um, and, um, Val mentioned the, the county board extension of the COGO. Um, that was done in January, so the COGO will expire in August of this year. We are looking for some additional community engagement opportunities once, um, we release the recommendations. Um, and then moving into phase three, um, later this month and through the summer, we're really looking to bring these zoning ordinance text amendments and updates to outdoor cafe guidelines, um, to commissions. Um, so we're touching, uh, base with the zoning committee for the first time tonight. We'll be coming back to the zoning committee, um, in June with specific test amendments. And we are looking to go to the county board and planning commission and, in June for us to advertise. Um, and then we're looking for, uh, county board action in July so that we can have some of the new regulations in place for when the COGO expires in August. Uh, so what's, what's the purpose of the study? The study was really developed at the height of the pandemic. Um, and you know, the study, uh, examined really what, what are the aspects of the TOSA program that should be incorporated into, uh, the permanent outdoor cafe guidelines, whether they be by right or, um, special exception or use permit. Um, some of the recommendations also, um, we're looking to inform, change, uh, current regulations for managing outdoor cafes, including those within the public space of right-of-way. And again, just taking lessons learned over the past three years over the pandemic from the TOSSAs and the outdoor dining, um, to improve the outdoor cafe framework. Uh, in the beginning of the study, we developed some overarching study themes. I'm not going to read through all these because it's a lot of text, but basically the three most important themes are, we really view restaurants, uh, as a public good, critical placemaking element for all residents. Um, we're really, um, looking as, uh, that expanding outdoor dining is, um, to address restaurant recovery and resiliency as well. And then we understand that not every space is the same. There's different spaces, different places, different spaces. So having some flexibility to accommodate different outdoor cafes, different setups, the goal. So just quickly go over, um, the existing, uh, policies and guidelines for outdoor cafes. So the current approval process, and this is also pre-pandemic, um, that you can have outdoor cafes on private property that can be approved administratively in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Or you can have an outdoor cafe in the public right-of-way, like on sidewalks, for example, or in public spaces like closets. And that is done by site plan or use permit approval that's approved. Um, and we developed these, uh, outdoor cafe guidelines that you see here back in twenty thirteen. So we're looking to update these guidelines. So this really serves as an all-in-one document for applicants going forward. Uh, just listing some of the other policies and regu- regulations. I mentioned the, the guidelines, which is an administrative document. We have the zoning ordinance, um, section fourteen applies to parking and twelve, uh, applies to outdoor cafes and accessory use. And we have the retail plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen. The master transportation plan pedestrian element and the public spaces master plan. All these encourage the use of public space, uh, for outdoor cafes. Of course, there's other regulations, um, such as the statewide building code, the fire prevention code, uh, the ABC control for alcoholic beverages. We have guidance on tents and heaters. And that's, uh, regulated. And then I'm also going to touch briefly on, uh, what we currently have in place is an encroachment ordinance, um, for outdoor cafes in the public right-of-way. Um, in terms of the zoning regulations overview, um, which is important to this committee, um, I did provide the definition of what an outdoor cafe is. I do want to note that it does exclude rooftop areas. Um, but it's a pretty straightforward definition. I think we're all pretty familiar with what an outdoor cafe is. Um, we mentioned earlier that outdoor cafes are accessory use to the main use of a property as a restaurant. And in the section twelve, nine, fifteen, there are use standards that are in there. Um, there's probably, I think, nine new standards currently, um, for private property. Um, just to, the bullets kind of provide an overview of what those standards entail, such as all furniture fixtures must be removable, nothing permanently affixed to the ground. It cannot be enclosed or elsewhere count towards, um, rose floor area of the building. Uh, there's restrictions on sound, audio and visual entertainment. And it should have fewer seats in the indoor portion of the restaurant. I do note that with the last two bullets, that those restrictions on sound and the, the capacity and the amount of seats can currently be modified by the county board, uh, by use permit. And then, um, for the public right-of-way and easement areas for public use, again, that's subject to review of the use permit approval by the county. Um, there are also changes, I, I do want to note in twenty seventeen, to enable some use permit modifications, service standards. Um, continuing on the zoning ordinance, uh, specifically for private property. Um, cur- currently, uh, outdoor cafes on private property can it be approved by right, uh, in compliance with the zoning? Um, we do have, uh, a number of TOSSAs that you'll see in a minute that have been utilizing, uh, parking spaces for outdoor cafes. Um, I did want to note that in the zoning ordinance, there is a parking ratio for restaurant. And then we were just talking about that with Commissioner Montalvo. Um, but there haven't been, been no changes to the zoning since nineteen sixty. Um, and that's one parking space for every six seats inside the restaurant. Um, restaurants are also exempted from parking if they're located within a thousand feet of a metro station entrance. Um, and the county board can modify the parking by use permit, uh, only within that one thousand feet of metro. And that really dates back to the nineteen seventies, uh, the RV corridor and the bullseye concept, um, for the roughly a ten-minute walk from the metro. So the, uh, zoning ordinance does mandate that parking spaces, um, are provided for cars. Um, so currently, uh, parking, uh, in off-street private spaces can only be for the parking of automobiles. So if we were to provide, um, a provision in the zoning ordinance to prevent outdoor cafes and parking, we'd have to modify the, uh, parking, parking section. Mentioned the retail plan, of course, outdoor cafes and live in the streetscape. Um, the action plan and the retail plan, um, uh, called for an administrative license process to use the public right-of-way. This is what a lot of other cities and neighboring jurisdictions do. And this is really, um, to permit the, the restaurant to, the private use of the public space. And so I'll be talking about that in a minute when I talk about, uh, recommendations for an outdoor cafe license. So this was recommended in, in the retail plan. Um, mentioned the master transportation plan pedestrian element, of course, encouraging outdoor cafes to enliven streetscapes. It does note, um, some guidance on clear zones and clear paths. Um, but it does indicate that we may have other clear zones on sidewalks that are dictated by sector plans or streetscape standards or site plan conditions. So that may require more than, uh, six foot is. And then the public spaces master plan, uh, also encourages, um, public, um, excuse me, outdoor cafes. But it really wants them to be thought of earlier on in the process and not really an afterthought. Um, so that's something to consider as well. So just looking at the current approval process, and this is pre-pandemic, um, as well, is that the use permit is approved in the public space or the public right-of-way by the county board. And it's a minimum of three months. You currently apply, you pay a fee. Um, there's, you have to meet the filing and advertisement deadlines for the public hearings. There's staff reports, engagement. Typically, these are on the consent agenda that are approved by the county board. And there's a use permit that's approved with the conditions. And then after that, you can apply for certificate of occupancy before installing the outdoor cafe. So those are outdoor cafes. So the TOSA that I mentioned were, uh, established i- in the beginning of the pandemic in twenty twenty to help restaurants and businesses to have expanded outdoor dining options, especially when, uh, some restaurants couldn't seat people indoors that really had to rely on outdoor seating. Um, we developed as staffs some, uh, flexible design and operational guidelines, um, to enable these. Uh, we developed an online submission process with no application fee. We had a, um, interdepartmental team of staff review. And these TOSSAs were approved by the county manager. Um, and currently we have approximately a hundred and forty-five TOSSAs that are on both public and private property. And as I mentioned, these TOSSAs are set to expire at the termination of COGO in August. So just, uh, some examples, um, showing, uh, some of the TOSSAs and outdoor cafes. I think you can see from some of the examples, we had, we made, made some exceptions for some cases where we put the pedestrian circulation in the street or the parking lane, like in the image on the top left, um, and allowed restaurants to take over the entire sidewalk. There's also cases where a lot of outdoor cafes have kind of creeped outward, creating, uh, pinch points and, uh, sometimes impassable, uh, areas on the sidewalk, which also impacts, uh, accessibility and ADA. Just some other examples of, um, some outdoor cafes along with other streetscape elements like bike racks and scoot- e-scooters, um, signage. You can just see some of these pictures. I mean, some of these look almost narrower than three feet wide. I love the picture with the umbrella right in the middle for clearance. Suns. Yeah. So just quickly, um, on the community engagement, I mentioned we started in phase one. I think in general, we were, you know, again, collecting information happen about how people thought about the TOSSAs. I think in general, everybody was very supportive, uh, supporting the local businesses. Um, everybody, most everybody, I, at least I know, enjoys outdoor dining and providing vibrant streetscapes. However, there was, uh, some concerns raised about accessibility, like you saw in some of the photos there about creating, uh, congestion on the sidewalks. Um, there was some support, um, in one of our survey questions for the reduction of, um, parking spaces for outdoor dining as well. Um, but the bottom line, uh, one of the most important things that we're addressing as part of this study is, uh, we want to streamline the process and make things easier for applicants, restaurants going forward. Uh, this is just a graphic, um, kind of summarize something that, some of the, um, the common themes that we heard throughout the engagement, um, on parking and, you know, health and safety and pedestrian accessibility. So now I've covered the, uh, the framework and some of the key work elements that are coming out of these recommendations. So we really have these three elements that we're working on. Um, and they're all hand in hand with one another. Um, the first being is, uh, the encroachment ordinance and outdoor cafe license. So this will be a new, new chapter of the county code, um, that we're proposing. And this again was recommended in the retail plan, twenty fifteen. This is going to be an administrative process, um, for requirements for an outdoor cafe license. And again, this is just for in the public right-of-way. Um, that would also include an application and a fee, that would also have an annual review as well. So that's one element, uh, or one item, or one, one type of permit that applicants will need to obtain. Um, in terms of the zoning ordinance amendments, we're looking at permitting, uh, outdoor seating in public spaces or the right-of-way. Um, so moving from the use permit review to an administrative review, um, with a revocation for, uh, non-compliance that would be identified in the outdoor cafe license. So this is a big change, um, we're recommending. Um, and you'll be seeing, uh, some draft zoning text before we meet next time. Um, we're also going to be identifying in the zoning ordinance, very clear, uh, design standards related to the placement of those spaces, like the, the clear sidewalk, for example. And then, uh, on the private side, we're looking, uh, to be, uh, give the county board the ability to, uh, modify off-street parking for outdoor cafe. And I mentioned the outdoor cafe guidelines. We're looking to update those as well. And that's really, again, an all-in-one document that's going to explain, walk somebody through the process. What they need to do is the permitting, going to include guidance on clear sidewalks, uh, pedestrian safety, fire, building code. There's a number of things that are in different places throughout the county that we're looking to consolidate to one. Uh, so what's not changing in the framework? Um, we're certainly are not recommending any changes to the building code, the fire code or the, uh, for JABC or guidance for tents and heaters. These are all very important, um, parts of the review. Any, anything in the built environment. So we're not looking to make changes there. Um, so now I'll just go over briefly, uh, our preliminary recommendations, starting with, uh, the public space, what we commonly refer to as, as the right-of-way. I, I mentioned the county code chapter, the new code chapter that's going to be proposed. Um, again, this will be, require a license for the outdoor cafe in the public right-of-way. It's an admin review process, it's going to include a fee. Um, and this will be in addition to other standards in the zoning ordinance. And this, uh, item will also come forward with recommendations from the food study, uh, to the county board on the June and July timeframe. So again, this, uh, this would be a, a streamlined administrative review process. Um, you know, just some background on use permits. We looked at this five-year window where there was only an average of five use permits for outdoor cafes that were approved every year in about six renewals. I mentioned the timeframe in terms of the filing, the public hearing and the cost, uh, just the minimum cost for a use permit, uh, is two thousand dollars plus any additional costs. Um, and then, so some of the benefits of the admin review process, I think I've identified, but this also would reduce cost and time and resources for staff and the applicant. And this could also, or, or will, I should say, improve the enforcement and inspection process. Um, because with the outdoor cafe license, there'll be an annual fee and that, uh, provides an opportunity for our, our zoning staff and staff and, uh, environmental services to be, conduct, uh, routine inspections to make sure that folks are complying, you know, with their approved layout that's on their license. Um, I do want to note that, um, considering main or maintaining the ability for the county board, um, to, uh, review a use permit approval for those outdoor cafes that are in public access easement areas or privately owned public spaces or what we commonly refer to as POPs. So those would still go to the county board for a use permit, um, with renewals. Moving on to private property, um, I mentioned, um, some of the cases where some off-street parking spaces have been converted to cafes. This is an example just down the street here in, uh, West Roslyn at Roadside Grill, um, where they converted approximately five parking spaces into an outdoor cafe. Um, but this currently is not allowed in the zoning ordinance. They would, that's, uh, recommending a, uh, amendment to permit some of these going forward. Um, of those type of TOSSAs, I mentioned we have a hundred and forty-five TOSSAs in total. And there's only approximately ten of those that are using, uh, off-street parking spaces. Um, and they typically occupy between like four to five parking spaces. Um, some of the more, uh, popular ones are, um, Twenty-third Street Restaurant Row, Crystal City, uh, or National Landing, sorry. So, uh, our recommendations for the private property, um, are again zoning ordinance amendments to permit the outdoor dining on the zoning required parking spaces. Um, and this would be subject to a use permit approved by the county board. Um, some of the considerations we're looking at, the outdoor cafe section, we're not currently recommending any changes to the parking section of the ordinance. Um, as Val indicated, there's additional items, uh, for future study, um, such as looking at, uh, commercial parking as a whole and not just. a commercial parking as a whole and not just restaurants. So that's something that we're going to look at further. And what we're assuming is that applications for these types could be filed following county board adoption. Like I said earlier, this would only impact about 10 to 12 TOSAs. Food design standards. The next steps, and this should be it. We're going to continue some focus engagement through the summer. We're going to be coming back to this committee on June the 6th with more refined recommendations and some zoning texts for you all to review. We're looking at also attending other missions like transportation commission partner recognition, pedestrian advisory and economic development. And then these are the dates for the June and July planning commission and county board hearings. And again, the encroachment ordinance and the fee scheduled for that outdoor cafe license would be coming together with recommendations for this stuff. There's my contact if anybody has any questions or wants to reach out to me. Anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Thanks for the presentation. So those conversations with us, does anybody have any questions or comments? Which I will just make sure Tom and Nancy is Canada and I'll start with this. My hand, my hand.
Yep, and sure. And Brett, you're right. I'll have questions about parking. And I want to make sure I understood things. When we're for outdoor cafes. I know that our parking is tied to the number of seats, ta, sit down, number of seats in the restaurant. Does that number include tables on the outside or just the inside seating for the, for the parking ratio?
Yeah, so it's just the inside. So there are no, there is no parking required for outdoor cafes. It's just the seats inside.
Great. Okay, great. Yeah, that I'm happy with that. That's good. And yes, I absolutely support doing that parking study as the large, as part of the larger thing, but this really has to be included in that larger study. Because I know at least one potential restaurant site that part of the problem with them opening or using an unused building is parking that would be required and where they would be able to do it in order to have a restaurant on that site. And it's just very frustrating for everybody. So yeah, thanks. That was, that was my question and you answered it.
Thanks.
Well, I think this is really exciting. When I think of my favorite cities, I think of Tunis, Istanbul, Paris, Buenos Aires, where they have this really vibrant cafe community. And I think that's really great. But I am really interested in terms of EIA, so first of the equity issue of accessibility. I know that at least sure is right, there's very little right of way for sort of ADA accessibility. And I presume that you're obviously going to be looking at this and sort of enforcement of when there's violations of this. But what are some of the other challenges that you think could arise by allowing this sort of to go through and not, and not, I mean, I guess, let me make sure I'm asking the correct question. In your study, how are you guys going to assess the impacts of ADA accessibility?
Well, I think number one, first we'll be looking at our building code, our ADA requirements to ensure that there's adequate space for folks to get around these things, but also once you're within one, if there's adequate space for ADA access within the outdoor cafe itself, but also getting to the inside of the restaurant is important as well, having clear means of egress to and from the inside of the restaurant. So I think the building code, fire code, and then we're looking at some of the regulations that we presented earlier on the master transportation plan. We're going to be developing a minimum clear sidewalk. However, if it's part of a site plan that has a eight, an eight foot sidewalk as opposed to a six, they would need to comply with their approved site plan. They could come in for a site plan amendment, reduce an eight foot down to a six, but that's going to require an amendment by the county.
Yeah, also the, there will be a building permit required for all those accessibility requirements kick in. So the people in the restaurant have to get out. They don't have to go through the cafe to get out. So it's a straight line of sight. Someone who can see as well that that clear side path is important. So by ability permit, it's not just about securing things on the ground. It's also opening up all of these codes.
You did show us pictures of people violating the, so how, when, if, when that is happening, what mechanism does a person have to revoke this permit for noncompliance?
So currently, most of our enforcement is mostly complaint driven. But somebody like anybody here walking by and saying, hey, so and so restaurant. Can you get by with my stroller or whatever? They can file a complaint with our zoning enforcement office and they can, they'll make a visit and issue a violation. They'll have a period of time where they have to come into compliance. That's the way it currently works today. I think what we're envisioning with this new outdoor cafe license process, with the annual renewal, that'll give us an opportunity to go back out there every year and check on these things. So I think it's mostly been complaint driven.
There's not active.
Well, yeah, I mean, if they're not going forward with the license, they're not compliant with what's on their approved layout drawings that's on their license, then we have the ability county to go in and revoke or try and get them to come into we don't want to shut them down. It's just like, you know, here, there's some ways you can come into compliance. But if they don't, then we have the ability to remove. Or if, an example, if we were coming in on a sidewalk and we had a capital improvement project and we're putting in like a new water main or something like that and the cafe was in the way, we have the ability to revoke it. Have a move so we can do.
Maybe back on that. So I think the compliance, I think was a question I had, the longevity of the permit. So it's annual, just to be clear. So they have a free deal every year?
The ones that are in the public space.
Okay.
Private ones. And those with a use permit may have a different time frame. So once the permit is established, that's an end.
Yeah. So like the roadside grill came in and got a use permit to reduce their parking. Then they would have a use permit that gets renewed on a one, three or five year site.
Okay.
And that gives a time to, for staff to go and check. Unless there's a complaint.
Great. Okay. But the, like when the sidewalk one.
So there's two tools, one's for private. So that's the encroachment fee and license will be applied to those cafes that are in the public space. And for those that are in the private space, which are private, they'll have the certificate of occupancy, which can also be revoked if necessary. But there are different tools depending on the type of cafe location.
And you mentioned guidelines. I don't think I've seen that. Yeah, I should have. I apologize if I did it. But is that an opportunity for us to educate the applicants on ADA accessibility, minimum widths and so on and so forth? Perhaps we can go to graphics.
Yeah, that's a document that we created in 2013. It's probably hard to find. I mean, we're familiar with it because we refer to it. The document, it's kind of like an all in one. It has like all the guidance for all outdoor cafes, public, private. But we're looking to expand it to.
It's only six pages now. So to your point, I think we, and there are so many great precedents around the country and the world that we are looking to illustrate some of these principles of good design and also, you know, those which are forceful, but also good design guidelines versus standards. So the standards will be very strictly written for the zoning ordinance, but there'll be additional guidelines that will be in these operation manual about the best practices.
Aaron.
That's right. No worries. A separate question. I noticed in the roadside grill picture, I used to live around that area. It's really nice that now they have that additional space where there was parking. So, but that parking has been taken away now. So and I know people in Arlington are always really interested in parking. Now there's limited parking and they're going to go around the neighborhoods. I used to work, live around there. So I know it's sort of congested area. How are we, I know you mentioned you guys are working on a large version of the estimate, but I'm just curious about sort of the process there and how you're working to incorporate that.
Yeah. So we're looking at including a new part of the zoning text. Create a new vision of the private property for the restaurant. Have the ability with a use permit approval by the county board to modify required parking. We are in the process of developing standards for that, aid in that review. Because, you know, some of these cases, they may have excess parking where they could convert you know, non-required parking spaces to an outdoor cafe. Currently, our zoning doesn't allow any conversion of parking to anything other than so we are looking at working on some draft text and then share it in committee next time. But I think one thing that I have learned from our transportation staff is that we haven't received any complaints over the past three years for these types of applications. And we've got some examples where folks have just completely taken over the entire parking lot. Three restaurants in 23rd Street there.
But that is also mostly, I mean, three years of the pandemic, right? So there was less people driving and now we're sort of way back and there's more cars than we.
And one of the things that's going to require obviously is the owner, the owner of the commercial development that this particular restaurant may be facing. They have to sign on to this. They actually have to be. So it's up to the owner to work with the other tenants, determine what is an acceptable parking. And I think it's, you raise a great point about sort of the neighborhood. So through any use permit, as Brett mentioned, there is an engagement process which by necessity reaches out to civic associations. So we think that three months is also a good opportunity to figure out what's right size and maybe it's not five spaces, maybe it's three. I think if you can show them a pathway to success, we can, we can, you know, adjust as we go on a case by case basis because they are really very unique to each other.
No, I could just push the sort of some of that back or fix. I've been curious as to how that's going to happen.
Yeah, it was, did you back? I'm also curious to hear what the COVID impact will be on a permanent basis. You're next, but let me check with Jim. Jim, did you have a comment about parking specifically?
Yeah, actually I do. Not surprising, I suppose. If anything, we, yeah, and I think it's a good point that Commissioner Gorbarev has mentioned that, well, maybe people weren't driving as much during COVID, but pretty much it's bounced back now. You know, people driving everywhere. In fact, they're using, driving more than they are taking the subway. But it doesn't seem to have affected the ability, there's restaurants to draw people in to have the number of people that have been coming before. It doesn't seem that they're losing those parking spaces has impacted their business. And there certainly don't seem to me to be any complaints in the surrounding neighborhoods because, oh, we're, we're being inundated by cars going to the restaurants. So I mean, we have some real world experience now that these parking ratios don't really have any relationship to reality and needs. I mean, and we could tell that right now Georgetown has lots of restaurants that have no parking. And people still go to those and there's no subway there. So people are driving if they want to go, if they're not walking. Same with the Old Town Alexandria. You know, we'll get, that's not close to the subway. If we go down there, I've walked as much as a quarter mile away from getting a parking spot on the street to go to a restaurant and that's been fine with me. I don't see why in our commercial districts, whether it's, it even needs to be tied to the distance from the metro. You know, it's up to the restaurant to decide whether they have enough parking for their customers. And if they don't have enough parking and it's going to impact them, they're not going to open. And if they don't have any parking and they're still full, well, that tells you something right there. So I am strongly in favor of just really getting rid of parking minimums and letting the, the restaurant owners be the ones to determine what their needs are and whether they're going to be accept, success based on those. I think our real world experience has pretty much shown that there's no relationship between our requiring parking and the success of the restaurant or the impact on the surrounding communities. Anyway, that's my, that you'll probably hear that in transportation commission too. Thanks.
That's a good point.
I wanted to make sure I understand. So the old process was use permits. It took cost $2,000 and it took more than three months. And the new process is going to cost less and take less than three months. Or can you?
Yes. So we're currently developing a new fee. So the fee schedule of the county board tops. We don't have that number to share today. Share it next time.
Are we thinking like 200 bucks or 50 bucks?
We're trying to keep it as cheap as possible. But I, I don't have any numbers unfortunately to share, but we do recognize the you know, we don't want to create anything. Yeah, you're right. It is currently a minimum of three months and then $2,000 plus additional fees. So we're looking to keep it process that we can under or up to 30 days in terms of a review.
And that's where our administrative changes are now. But if provisions are needed, to the same people that would be in our department. We'll be reviewing these administrative. So staff time is about the same as the, the length of time, the board actions that really add to length and expense because it takes something to the word. You can't just do it alone. You can't just fill out that application yourself. And that's what we're hoping for small businesses. Is that within a couple of steps, they know that they can go administratively. And they know that how to do that. But we don't want to send them down a rabbit hole either. We're really trying to encourage through this administrative process that people do conform. We don't want them to use permit. We don't want to go for site. Rather than work to.
And so the current policy that allows them to have their outdoor cafes is going to expire on August 15th. And on August 16th, unless they have already got this new permit approved, they have to take all of their things down. They're done. And I mean, they, they know this is coming. They've already got their permits in. I just want to make sure.
Communication plan. Message out. To restaurant owners, specifically the ones that have TOSAs. We know they're going to be impacted first. They have questions and each one of them is unique and we're going to look to do like one-on-one consultation when needed and like just answer questions, but to the degree that we can make it clear in this guidelines document and on the website to make it clear what they need to do. And I think we're setting up timelines. Like if you have a TOSA, for example, I don't want to confuse everybody, but if you have a TOSA with a with an approved use permit pre-pandemic, you can always go back to that approved use permit and do nothing. Just pull back your TOSA. Make it, you know, look like the, match the approved plans from the county board. Or you can come in for a use permit amendment if you want to do expansion or continue to maintain.
Well, I'm just thinking, so this is going to get approved by the county board July 15th. That's when you guys can start taking applications.
We want to go by July 15th so they have their application in.
So they submit it that day. Oh, application gets submitted for it. I just don't want us to, to get to August 15th and they haven't had appropriate time to fill out their applications. Then all of a sudden it's the end of summer. Well, the tourists are here. They're going to miss revenue, which then leads to absence of tax revenue that, you know, benefits the county.
And as long as they have their application in, not going to actively course, certainly be encouraging to move along, but we are, that's being consulted with the county attorneys instead. I'm not going to go after them as long as they're actively working with staff on whichever path that is appropriate. So this is more rather than coming to the
So this is more rather than coming to us, Brett mentioned, we're going to them. We're identifying who's who, which type they are. Point specific instructions for this first round so that they understand. But yes, these, as you saw in the pictures, that's going to change, has to change.
When you say enclosed, does that mean if somebody had a winter cafe, they would or wouldn't be allowed to put like tent flaps around their space? Or those bobbies?
I believe those are allowed. I can check into that, but you know, like the roll up kind of like plastic. So it's not fully enclosed, like permanently. Glass.
Well, we're in different, different for a tent guideline, so I assume that those. Let's get back to you on that. Let's, yeah, before we speak categorically one way or the other, that, you know, Brett and I attended a meeting with the fire marshal and the building official earlier today. And once we start talking about tents, we get into a special regulatory environment. So I think we should be informative as best we can.
And I think the government said recently, oh, we should expect 20 to 40% chance of more COVID waves coming. So are we able to pivot quickly if you get to some big waves coming? Or is it like, no, we're done?
Hoping that we're done. We don't have another pandemic. And that's really the purpose of this study was to develop some permanent regulations that kind of have a little bit of both, some, some nice to add from the TOSSAs. But then some things that we need to pull back on for like accessibility. Open that our new regulations are flexible enough to accommodate another pandemic, but certainly something that we're not planning for at the moment. Well, and there are also, this is phase one of looking at opportunities. I think that's a great point. You know, economic development has sort of identified some other areas that we want to continue to look at and that would be one of them. And for example, we were, this is not going to allow the cafes parking spaces. So we do not have, because as Brett mentioned in the ordinance, a parking space is really intended for one use, it's for an automobile. Now, we've been able to put parklets there. As anything that's an extension for the public benefit, such as a pedestrian facility or a park and encroach into the street area because it's still, once you create a commercial use in that parking space, we're not the area. So you know, there's value in that space. There's, you know, we actually look at how much meters, you know, in terms of revenue, say a college had to cover that. So that's a second phase. But I think you're right. It's how do we expand as needed? And do we come back with a TOSO once again, right? Maybe a cleaner TOSO, maybe not as rushed, but that's certainly something I think Brett was. Consider as look at these other items.
So the parklet was the last thing that I had in my notes, which was, I couldn't remember that that was the name, but I just remember like a year and a half ago. Planning commission, I think with A D approved parklets from parking spaces. Yeah, so, but right now. So could somebody, if they can't convert their parking space, a public parking space, that they could say, well, I want to, I want to get three parklets here and I'm going to put some chairs there and now people can get takeout service.
Has to be open to the public. So I can grab and go from a restaurant, go sit. And the one that's on Oakland Street across, you can grab, but you can't have someone coming out there bussing tables big and large. So everyone could bring their. And there is a, there is a process for part of it.
But it was like $5,000, right? So. Probably not worth it.
I think for certain, you know, larger developers, it might be, you know, they see the advantage of creating that place making and opportunity for sitting by themselves.
I had one sort of certification question. What is the language in the COGO, the city government operations, something or the other? That allows us to do all this? Is there this thing that we? You know, I mean, I'm just thinking like, it seems to work. I know it was a special exception, but is there any lessons that we can take from there or? And I don't know, it just seems like that language is very good and awesome to do a lot. So I don't know, feeling like, hey, we need a permit.
We don't need the till in the middle anymore.
But yeah, I think, I think, do we know that we like? Did anybody read the COGO first? I sure did.
I have not, but didn't have the, the first TOSSA extended for six months. Then the county manager had the ability to extend it for another six months. During January, so now that's why it's in August. And our conversations with the county attorneys have no way to extend it any further. But that's outlined by the state. That's why we.
Hey, Nick, Leo, this is Jill.
Jill, you're on.
Are you reading the?
Great. I am familiar with the COGO, so there are a couple of different things that allowed for for these TOSSAs. One, the COGO basically stated that certain elements of our code, our zoning code would not be enforced. So that also included the food delivery piece of it. Which is why there weren't any use permits. So this, we're going back to that first piece that you listened to this evening. The second piece was, there was actually a section in the COGO that spoke to TOSSAs, the standing up of TOSSAs. And then it was amended to include PTOSSAs and those were TOSSAs that were on publicly accessible spaces that were sort of shared areas. One was stood up in charlington. It no longer exists. So. Long story short, we weren't enforcing certain things and now we no longer have the ability to not enforce things.
Thanks, Jill. Anything else? All I have. You guys are done. But I think we'll wrap it up. Here's our next steps.
I think just, I think it would be helpful to, you know, I'll be working with Brett as on drafting some of the texts that was conceptually discussed. So any sort of closing thoughts or comments or feedback for commissioners to sum up what they've heard tonight? And any areas of attention or concern or areas that would benefit from additional clarity? We can take that and help that inform your briefing next.
Sounds good. Do you want me to?
Closing comments.
All right. So making sure no public speakers, nobody signed up?
I have not indicated, I'm not hearing anything from the chat. So no public speakers.
Do you have Karen West, can you do your closing statement? Quick closing statement.
If you have, just for the whole thing.
Well, it's exciting to see some changes that may be coming about in Arlington, particularly. It's continuing to come out of space.
Just about the outdoor dining.
Just in general.
I'm a big fan of the outdoor dining. And as.
Jim, did you have any closing statements?
No, other than it's a great initiative, definitely I'll be in favor of it moving forward.
Perfect. Me too. I will say I strongly support this. I strongly support the staff work on this. Thanks for the great presentations. You know, we learned a lot tonight. You guys were very informative and professional. So I really appreciate you guys providing all this information for us. And yeah, we continue to support this and anything that we can do to help and expedite it, we're happy to do it. And, you know, particularly with the TOSSAs that I think are prime sensitive. Also, both of the.
Who's delivering?
Shut down, right? So anything that we can do to expedite those to make sure that, you know, everybody continues operating is sort of and I'm happy to assist my citizen capacity such as it is. Other than that, thanks everyone for coming. Thank you, Karen, for showing up at the last minute. Helping us keep this meeting on track. I think, Mr. Penley, thank you, Lance, Jim, for showing up. And staff, as always, for the great work and staying late, hanging out with us.
Thanks so much.